My minutes of February 23rd, 2015 say that you approve the minutes of January 28th meeting, but my agenda says 26th January. Was that corrected?
Mr. Linden, I have to look and see if it is corrected on...
I just was concerned about which date that was actually held. Tonight's agenda, I have questions about items C, 3, A, B, and C, which is the Gooseneck trailer, the one-ton 3,500 pickup truck, and the cutaway box truck. I appreciate if you could give us some information, some details about what these vehicles are, what they're for, and what your budget is for those, what budget amounts you have. For example, the Gooseneck trailer, is that a flatbed trailer or is that enclosed? And the cutaway box trailer, another 3,500, a Model 3,500 with a box on the back, which could vary in dimension. So I guess I'd like to know what that dimension is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linden. I'm sure that some of that will come up during the discussion when those motions come. To the floor tonight, next name is Jane Walker.
Hello. My name is Jane Walker, and I'm here to find out when exactly graduation is going to be this year. Do we have a date set?
We have two potential dates. As you probably know, we hold graduation at Stabler Arena, and obviously they have limited open dates because of other schools that hold graduation there. And we're well down the priority list simply because we were delayed guys getting in. So there are two dates, and I think they are the 10th and the 19th, don't, 16th, sorry. Don't quote me on that. Obviously, one thing that comes into play is the 180-day rule the state requires, although they will waive that if we apply. As someone who drove to Boston in the snow all the way on Friday, we haven't made a commitment yet for obvious reasons, because the weather can still be quite uncertain. We will let you know as soon as a decision is made.
Okay, so you are not going to make that decision tonight?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
As I say, snow is still, although not in the forecast, but I have seen, it's still a very real possibility.
Okay, can I just have one more moment of your time then to put in a request that if it's not going to push back the actual number of, well, I'm not sure how to say this, but when will school actually end for seniors? By pushing graduation back to the 16th, will that mean that the seniors will have to stay in school longer? Or is that a set number of days that they have to stay in school, and is that already determined?
Still open, I think, for discussion, yes. Obviously, the 180 days falls between the 10th and the 16th.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Splecki. And I apologize if I didn't get your name correct.
Lord Splecki, Purgacy. First of all, I'd like to offer my support and thanks to the PEA, PSC, and board negotiating teams who are continuing to communicate, negotiate significant contracts. This is not an easy task by any stretch, and the efforts are appreciated. It is vital that we teach our children to come together, communicate, and discuss in order to understand, resolve, and move forward. Having a fair agreement to support the professionals to stand before these children every day is essential, and I am thankful this important process continues. For my other hat this evening, I'm wearing my assistant marching band director's hat, although not as colorful as the ones the band actually wears. I just want to take a moment to thank the board for considering 105 on the finance committee report, the band trailer and truck to tow it. This will really make our operation much more effective and efficient, and certainly protect the tremendous investment in instrumentation and equipment the district has made in the past few years. Certainly, this will also maximize safety as well as ultimately saving transportation costs, as we will not have to use as many vehicles to move the band. I know the students, the parents, and staff are appreciative of these items going out the bid. Thank you to Mr. Loffler and the administration, as well as the parents and Mr. Benson for continuing to pursue this investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment before the meeting starts? If not, then we'll then move to the consent calendar. For board members, there were some agenda or addenda items that were added or changed on the consent calendar, I believe, today, and arrived by email. Are there any of the items on the list, items A through I, that board members would like to have voted on separately? If not, do I have a motion to approve all items A through I on the consent calendar?
Those moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Deming, seconded by Mr. Sarnis to approve the items on the consent calendar. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Thank you. We'll move next to student liaison. Mr. Council.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Student council, as well as Pen Ridge High School, has had very jam-packed first few months of 2015, but very, very great stuff going on. Last week, student council hosted the first blood drive at Pen Ridge High School since 2012. This was something that a few of us decided to bring back because we thought it was a very helpful thing for the community, and it saves lives, obviously. We learned that the Delaware Valley, so southeastern Pennsylvania, southern New Jersey, and northern Delaware, that area, every day needs 1,000 pints of blood from the Red Cross to maintain operations and to make sure that everyone has any blood that they may need. And Pen Ridge High School alone, the Pen Ridge High School student body, as well as teachers, donated 95 pints of blood in one day. Just about 10% of the blood from the Delaware Valley came from Pen Ridge on the 17th, so that was something we were absolutely thrilled about. So we want to continue that in the future as well, because we think it's a very helpful thing to do. The Red Cross is very helpful with the way they set it up, and the administration was very supportive of us all the way. Coming up with student council, on April 2nd is our annual spring breakfast, and for $6 from 6:00 a.m. to 7:15 a.m. on that day, you don't have to come right at 6:00. It's an all-you-can-eat breakfast buffet and the funds for student council and the work that we're doing through the coming months and years. And this is one final thing, that we're looking at several events that will be running or just donations we'll be making. Some organizations we're looking at donating to or supporting at different events include the Wounded Warrior Project, the Travis Mannion Foundation, the Four Diamond Funds, the Mini-Thon, as well as the National Art Education Foundation. So look, we have a Facebook page and Twitter, as well as I know Mr. Ferry puts out a lot of information about the events we're doing, so stay tuned for that and see how you can support any of those great causes. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be very brief tonight with my president's report. I spoke on February 23rd about the upcoming budget. Obviously, the governor has presented his budget. His budget, I think, was a surprise to many, and definitely not, did not receive great plaudits from the legislative leaders. So I think that portends for this school board and others and the administration, a long process perhaps in terms of gaining a full state budget, which in turn means that Mrs. Johnson's assumption that we will be held harmless, a term which I'm not sure really is accurate, but it is what we call when we assume that the amount of money that the state will provide to the Pen Ridge school system does not decrease from year to year but remains static. So obviously, if the governor's budget were passed intact, as Mrs. Johnson pointed out, there would be a significant additional amount of monies that would come to Pen Ridge. But in our case, since we must have a budget by the end of the fiscal year, that being June 30th, whereas the state uses that date somewhat loosely, we probably will have to update our budget without knowing for sure what the governor and the legislature decide in terms of the state budget. At the same time, there was also some information released by the PISA system, and some of it was cheerful and some not. Obviously, they did fairly well, as I mentioned, on some of their investments in this past year, but Pennsylvania still remains the third most in deficit in terms of their financial position in terms of pensions. Only Illinois and New Jersey are worse off than Pennsylvania. So that does not seem to be, I know Senator Corman, the majority leader in the Senate from Center County, has said that the PISA's pension crisis is his first priority. But we've heard this before and not seen much action along those lines, so we'll all have to wait and see, but I'm not terribly optimistic about it. But that's not my nature. The only other thing I have to say is, we have had this since the last report, three additional write-to-know requests. We don't have an accounting on money. We have changed our firm, and Eastburn and Gray is now going to be doing the write-to-know request, so once we receive that, I can report that probably in the April report. At this point, we'll move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Attigan.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Yarnell. First, I would like to say thank you to the North Middle School for the district meeting office room display, and thank you to several groups for donations. First, to the Seattle Foundation, which gave $3,000 to Penn Central Middle School to support classroom technology integration. Next, BJ's Adopt a School project gave $500 to Sellersville Elementary School, and the Siler HSA is donating playground equipment, so we thank everyone for their generosity. I would also like to give an update on one of our district's goals, which is social and emotional learning. More than two decades of rigorous scientific research shows that high-quality, well-implemented social and emotional learning has a positive effect on school climate and promotes a host of academic, social, and emotional benefits for students. There are also skills demanded by today's employers. According to the National Association of Colleges and Employers, of course, they say top candidates need to have the requisite major in GPA and relevant work experience, but it's the soft skills that make them ideal. So as part of promoting these skills, we have a Takes Pride Initiative that started this school year. The Pen Ridge School District continues to pride itself on the fact that we work to educate the whole child. We have many wonderful initiatives K to 12 in the area of social and emotional learning, and we have attempted to better coordinate our endeavors and have gathered our efforts under one umbrella called Pen Ridge Takes Pride. Each month, all of our schools promote the same theme of positive behavior, and each letter of Takes Pride represents a different character trait that promotes social and emotional learning skills. So as an example, here we are in the month of March, and the theme is respect. Just recently, students and staff were reminded that respect means an attitude of regard or esteem for another, and it's a courteous regard for the feelings and opinions of others. Our April theme will be initiative, and that means, as everyone will be reminded, making decisions and taking action on your own without the advice or help from others. People who demonstrate initiative, as we know, take steps to make things happen. So just recently, the staff members were reminded of the critical role that all of them play in modeling and reinforcing these skills, and we ask all of our community members to help join us in this endeavor. So thank you for your support. Well, it has truly been an historic season for our winter sports teams. Congratulations to all the athletes and coaches who continue to make us Pen Ridge proud. There are quite a few. The girls' swim team capped their season for the PIAA state championships, finishing fourth in the team standings, the highest finish ever for Pen Ridge. All performances resulted in Pen Ridge High School records by the quartet of Anna Benno, Morgan Scott, Brittany Weiss, and Hannah Zermol. Their relay and individual results include the following: silver medal 200 medley relay, Anna Benno, Brittany Weiss, Morgan Scott, Hannah Zermol; silver medal 200 freestyle, Morgan Scott; silver medal 50 freestyle, Hannah Zermol; silver medal 100 butterfly, Brittany Weiss; silver medal 100 freestyle, Morgan Scott; bronze medal 400 freestyle, Hannah, Anna, Brittany, and Morgan; sixth place finish 100 breath stroke, Brittany Weiss; and ninth place finish 100 freestyle, Hannah Zermol. Meanwhile, the boys' basketball team made its first-ever venture into the state playoffs, upsetting Ready in the first round before dropping a 73-70 heartbreaker to Plymouth Whitewash in the second round. The Rams finished their most successful season ever with a 26-5 record and the suburban one continental conference title. In bowling, there was senior Kara Wireman, who finished 18th at the state bowling championship. And the wrestling team finished 11th in the state. Matt Parker and Kyle Gentile won fifth-place medals, and Ezra Outlaw won a seventh-place medal. Cordell Rush, Josh Stillings, and Micah Visuwan all helped lead the team to an outstanding tournament. Stillings and Visuwan were the first freshmen from Pen Ridge to make it to states. Principal Gina Devona and athletic director David Bab recently recognized these scholar athletes from our winter sports teams. Christian Siliberto for bowling, Philip Gunderson indoor track, James White basketball, William O'Shea wrestling, Kyle Ericx for swimming, Hannah Kramlik for indoor track, Kaylee White for basketball, and Elizabeth Yardley for swimming. On to other items. Next month, the Pen Ridge Community Education Foundation will honor three outstanding individuals with its Friend of Education Award and a gala celebration at the Sellersville Theater. The late coach and teacher Bud Hollenbach, administrator Dr. Bruce Bevard, and teacher Nancy Martin were selected from among a strong field of nominations. The awards will be presented at a lovely evening, and by the way, it is truly lovely, I went last year, on Tuesday, April 28th, at the Sellersville Theater, which will also feature performances by our jazz ensemble, chamber choir, and other student groups. More information, including how to get tickets, will be available soon. Also, next month, the foundation will begin its annual dine-out-for-education program with Revival's Restaurant and Banquets. Owner Michael Scott will make a donation for each patron who has lunch or dinner on certain dates during April, with the foundation matching it dollar-for-dollar. Proceeds fund a future leader scholarship for one of our seniors. More details are on the foundation's website, as well as the restaurant's website. I hope everyone had a chance to see the high schools' production of Les Mis over the weekend. I can't tell you, I've seen many high school musicals in my day, and it was truly spectacular. You know that Mr. Regomo's daughter was in the show as an example, and I was truly impressed. Many of those actors and actresses got their start at the junior high level, so I would like to invite you to see our future stars perform Thoroughly Modern Millie at Penn Central this Saturday and Sunday, and Once Upon a Mattress at Penn South on April 10th and 11th. Our high school debate team continues to make us Pen Ridge proud. During the second round of the Lehigh Valley Interscholastic Debate Association semifinals, the team of senior Ashley Landis, senior Nick Parsons, junior Julia Frederick, and senior Casey Hoffman had a complete sweep of northern Lehigh and Sauk and Valor. The current record of 3-1 has the team tied for second in the league. Over at Bedminster, students have been participating in Jump Rope for Heart for the past 15 years. I'm pleased to announce they have topped $100,000 in donations to the American Heart Association. In fact, including this year, the number is exactly $114,636.28. I want to thank the students and families who have been so generous with their time and money over the years. Special thanks to PE teacher Kevin Hickey, who started the program in 2000, and Judy Antonucci, who continued it after Kevin moved over to Penn North a few years ago. Senior Richard Hayes III is awaiting word from his appointment to the Naval Academy. In January, Richard was among 25 students from Bucks and Montgomery Counties, and the only one from Pen Ridge, to be nominated by Congressman Mike Fitzpatrick for a Military Service Academy nomination. Richard is definitely one of our shining stars. He scored 2160 on his SATs, has a cumulative GPA of 3.51, was a starting defensive lineman on the football team, and is active in the Concert Chamber, Acapella District, Regional, State, and all Eastern choirs. He has provided hundreds of hours of music instruction to inner-city youngsters throughout, through the Salvation Army. He has been accepted to Penn State, Drexel, Rutgers, and Valley Forge Academy. He has also applied for an ROTC scholarship, but that is also pending. Members of the Jewish war veterans of the United States post-697 in Levittown will be visiting Pen Ridge High School for a special Holocaust presentation at 3:00 p.m. this Thursday in the main auditorium. The event is sponsored by the Pen Ridge High School History Club. World War II vets will discuss their personal remembrances of the Holocaust, along with photographs, artifacts, and personal reflections to show the students. The presentation will have two speakers, Danny Goldsmith, who survived the Nazi terror as a young boy, and Bernie Lenz, a 94-year-old veteran who participated in the liberation of DuCal concentration camp. Students and the public will be given an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the presentation. It is free and open to the community. And finally, I wish to wish good luck to all our school champions who will participate in the Scripps Regional Spelling Day Saturday morning at the high school. From Bedminster, 5th grader Hannah Moran; from Dibler, 5th grader Lily Susir; from Guth, 4th grader Adriana Pachi; from Grass, 4th grader Jimmy Martin; from Sellersville, 5th grader Ben Steiman; Siler, 5th grader Emily Jo; North, 8th grader Reagan Cook; South, 6th grader Courtney Steiner; Central, 7th grader Bill Jordan; and West Rock Hill Zoe Boone, grade 5. There will be more than 60 students from schools throughout Bucks and Montgomery Counties at the B, with the winner advancing to the national competition in Washington, D.C. in May. Thanks also to the Education Foundation for sponsoring the B again this year. So there you have it, Dr. Yarnell.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the committee reports. The first one is activities. Mrs. Yardley.
The activities committee met on March 11th, and we discussed the overnight trips that are on the agenda, and Mr. Ferry presented a proposal for the adult evening school, and he's going to bring more information later about that. So I have two motions. First, I guess there's one motion has two trips. So I move to approve the following high school overnight trips. The 2015 Pine Forest Summer Cheerleading Camp at Trails End, August 18th to August 21st, 2015, and the 2016 UCA High School National Cheerleading Championship on Orlando, Florida, from February 5th to February 9th, 2016.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mrs. Yardley and seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the two overnight cheerleading trips. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. Mrs. Yardley?
Okay, the next activities committee meeting is scheduled for May 6th.
Thank you. Academic performance. The academic performance committee met on March 16th. We discussed the three items that are here listed as motions that I will ask for approval of tonight, as well as a potential change in the class rank policy, and also a textbook replacement cycle, and as well, an important part of the new PSSA content having to do with the English Language Arts Assessment and the way it will be conducted and what students will be expected to do. This is something that rose fairly short-term, and I believe our teachers are making every effort to get our students fully prepared for. So among the motions, the first is to approve the Pen Ridge Community Education Foundation awards for four of our, well, they're administrators and teachers, Mr. Tim Chatkin, Ms. Gray, Ms. Volak, and Ms. Weir. Do I have a second to approve these awards from the Pen Ridge Community Education Foundation? Moved by Dr. Yarnell, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt, to approve the Community Education Foundation awards. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries eight-zero. At this time, I see Mrs. Tracy McGinnity in the audience. I understand that she might help out with this presentation or this award.
Right here. We have four mini-grand awards going to Margaret Volak from Grass Elementary for iPads in the elementary classroom. We have one to Christian "Tim" Chatkin at Penn Central Middle School, Intergenerational Service Club, Amy Weir, Dibler, for Let's Focus, Active Seating in the Classroom, and Sarah Gray, Siler Elementary Music, Getting in Tune with Technology. And so if any of those people are here, we'd love to present your checks. First come, first taken. Congratulations. Thank you for taking the pictures. Thank you. I love the idea. Congratulations. You guys can give it back to us, and so if you have pictures, take pictures, get them to us.
Love to. Thank you very much.
Encourage your colleagues to apply for more grants.
Is that the four people listed? I don't know. Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations to the four members of our staff. The next motion is to approve changing the name of the academic performance committee to the curriculum committee. Do I have a second to that motion?
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Any comments or questions on this change? If not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. The third motion is to approve the summer school rates. I would note that those rates are the same as they were in this current year, meaning the summer of 2014. Do I have a second to approve the summer school rates?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Comments or questions for board members? Not, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight-zero. The next academic performance committee, actually the next curriculum committee, since that will be changed and will need to be changed in our policy, is scheduled for April 20th, 2015. 2015. This point, we'll move to the Facilities Committee, and who is going to do this? Mr. Regoma? Thank you for filling in.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Facilities Committee meeting met, pardon, the Facilities Committee met on March the 9th, and the first motion is to accept the bids for approval of the summer 15 capital improvements. There were three listed, operations building oil replacement, operations building a partial roof, and central middle school roof repairs. So I think we can all prove it once. And just for clarification, Mrs. Johnson, these all came in under bid if I, if memory serves?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Under budget.
Do we have a second to the motion to accept the three separate bids for the summer capital improvement projects?
I second.
Moved by Mr. Regoma and seconded by Mr. Deming to approve the capital, summer capital improvement project. Comments or questions for board members? Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. I came late to the meeting at the facilities. Is this, have these been, were these part of the plan, and these were already the votes? Thank you.
Anyone else? Not? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Regoma?
Second motion is two obsolete items listed below, letters A through F. If you can take those orders one.
Do we have a, do we have a second to the motion for the obsolete items? Moved by Mr. Regoma, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve obsoleting certain items as listed. Comments or questions for board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Regoma?
And the third item is motion to authorize the administration to advise bid and RFP for 2014, 2015, A, B, and C, A, the gooseneck trailer, 36-foot bid, B, a one-ton, 3,500 pickup truck, RFP co-stars, and C, the totally box truck, RFP co-stars.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Regoma, seconded by Mrs. Miller to approve the administration to bid these three items. Comments or questions from board members? Can anyone answer the questions that Mr. Reg, or, I'm sorry, Mr. Linden asked? Mr. Lofford, do you know the answers to the questions before we bid the, the items?
The items that were...
Can you come forward, please?
At the last board meeting, the items, option two and three, were what Mr. Benson had gave me. After I started looking for bid specs, they started to change some of the items, like the trailer and the truck. So they met again and finalized exactly what they wanted, and those are the new items that we're going to go out the bid for. So we have all the bid specs ready to go out the bid. I believe we'll be advertising this Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Yarnell, the bid specs will be posted on our, on our webpage, so they will be publicly available.
Thank you. Mr. Linden, that would be where you would find them then.
I have a question. So they're different than what was discussed at the Facilities Meeting, or are they what we discussed?
Somewhat slightly different. The truck is not a dual axle truck now, it's a single axle truck. The gooseneck trailer is similar, but I think it's actually six feet long, or am I correct? Mr. Lofford, what Mr. Lofford's saying is that...
Right, you're, you're correct. Originally, they asked for the 30-foot gooseneck, and when specs came to me, they were 36-foot. So we just wanted approval by the board, because we asked to go out the bid for the 30-foot, and it's really a 36-foot.
And if I could just add to that, if you remember the last meeting, there was some confusion as to what they really were looking for. We had two different requests, so I asked Mr. Vona to meet with Mr. Benson and the PMA, so everybody's now on the same page. So the two items that you're going to approve going out to, for, are what everyone is in agreement on.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Yarvin?
So does it, I guess, is the, is the truck, so are both things then more expensive than what was presented? I guess that was, that it was option two and three were these, but it's slightly different, so no.
I believe the costs are going to be very close to the same, option two, option three, the cost will be the, the same.
Okay, great. Oh, we have to go out the bid.
We have to go out the bid.
Right. But it's, you're expecting it to be in the ballpark?
Correct.
The other one.
Anyone else? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Thank you, Mr. Regoma. Last item?
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for April 13th.
Thank you. We'll move to Finance. Mr. Sarnes?
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Finance Committee also met on March 9th, immediately following the Facilities, and I have several motions. The first is a motion to approve learner resolution for the Sellersville Business Campus in Sellersville Borough, Bucks County, Pennsylvania.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mr. Regoma to approve the learner resolution. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnes?
Are you?
Thank you.
That's Commissioner Lofford. The next is a motion to review contracts, as listed below. We have A through G, so we'll take them all together.
Do we have a second for the motion involving reviewed contracts, items A through G?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the reviewed contracts. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnes?
And the third motion is to approve the Upper Bucks Technical School 2015-2016 budget.
Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Sarnes, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve, well, the Upper Bucks County Technical School budget. Comments or questions for board members? I will simply say that Palisades has passed this, six votes yes, three, three people absent, which effectively is a no vote. So I will lobby tonight again for as many positive votes as we can get to make sure that this passes the full board, or passes all three full boards, excuse me, and therefore goes into place. Any other comments or questions for board members? If not, Mr. Deming, sorry.
I just think that generally that Upper Bucks has done a pretty outstanding job over the last couple of years, so I think we'll see a reason we should support it.
Thank you. I'm sure Mr. Wiggins, though, or his staff, would appreciate it. I'll try to make sure that they hear that at our next meeting. Other comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnes?
The last is a motion to authorize the administration to advertise the 2015-2016 bids and RFPs, and they are for items A through J.
Do we have a second to this motion? Thank you, Mr. Deming. Moved by Mr. Sarnes and seconded by Mr. Deming to approve the motion to authorize advertisement of bids and RFPs. Excuse me. These are items that we do each and every year. So any other comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Schmidt?
I have a question. At the Finance meeting that evening, I questioned regarding letter A, the student planners, whether these are a need still because of the one-to-one program? Is that still going to be part of this RFP? Any discussion?
I did speak with Ms. Vona, and to your point, Mrs. Schmidt, she did say that because of the one-to-one, the students are no longer using as much as they used to, but she wanted to be sure. She left some available for those who still do want them. So I think, Mrs. Johnson, maybe there's about, I don't know, 100 or 200 for the high school in there?
Yes, and then the three middle schools still use, still use planners, so yes, the number is greatly reduced for the high school.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Sarnes?
Yes, the next Finance Committee meetings, we have two scheduled. The first will be April 8th, which is strictly a budget meeting, and that will start at 7:30, and then the next is part of the combined Facilities Finance on April 13th, and that'll start at 6:00.
Thank you. We'll move to the Intermediate Unit Report. That's Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. We met on March 17th at the IU. The highlight of the evening, of course, was the student artist, artist's display and reception. Nineteen schools were represented in the artist's range in age from second grade through 12th grade. Our very talented Penridge artist was Catherine Willer, 12th grade. Her work was titled Idol. Catherine stated she likes to focus on unusual subject matter or unusual points of view, and she certainly accomplished that by portraying the underside of a chair. I have a copy here. Emphasizing strong drawing strokes and textures. To accept her award, Catherine was accompanied by art teacher Deborah Altman, who is also in the Bucks County Visual Arts Advisory Council, along with Karen Sterling, representing Penridge. Their presentation was run by, BCIU was awarded a grant by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed to participate in Project MAX, an initiative designed to increase the IU's ability to provide all students, including those with complex instructional needs, with maximum access to the general education curriculum. Some of the long-term goals are teaching educators to effectively teach to the PA Core Standards, plan and deliver instruction that meets the needs of diverse learners, help parents develop high expectations of achievement, demonstrate growth and achievement in academic content for students with complex instructional needs, and students with complex instructional needs will engage in standards-aligned instruction using communication and assistive technology supports as needed. They did a demonstration of the technology they are using, it was very impressive. Project MAX is coordinated by a diverse team of IU stakeholders and participates in monthly professional development sessions, which are focused toward developing a culture of shared ownership, skill for educators, leadership, engaged families, and communities, et cetera. Mark your calendars for May 16th, which I agree was Mother's Day weekend. It's the day that BCIU hosts the Run, Walk, and Roll. Run, Walk, and Roll. I'm kidding. Last year, the Run, Walk, and Roll, $20,000, $10,000 of which was shared for serotoma, a group helping those with vision and hearing loss. There was an executive session in the middle of the meeting to discuss contract negotiations and personnel matters. As a note, many IU staff, including speech pathologists, OTs, PETs, guidance counselors, and psychologists, participate in the General Board meeting to share the scope and demands of their work dedicated to helping the children and families of the IU, BCIU. It was a lengthy meeting, but President Michael Hartline ensured each participant had sufficient time to voice their concerns. Board items, board-approved items included revenue transfers, contracts, agreements, proposals, bills for payment, purchases, first reading of Policy 806 regarding child abuse, and 2014-15 Project MAX budget. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 21st at 7:00 p.m., and it meets at the BCIU in Georgetown.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. We'll move to Personnel next, which is Mr. Deming.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. We have one motion, which is to approve the hiring of nine permanent substitute teachers through Source for Teachers. And it sounds to me like that's a pretty good thing. I'd like to, you know, that is the motion.
Do we have a second to the motion for hiring nine permanent substitutes through the remainder of the school year? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved by Mr. Demings, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve this motion. Comments or questions for board members? Mrs. Miller? Oh, you're, I'm sorry, your light is on. I thought you... Sorry.
Hi, Dr. Yarnell.
Just trying to pay attention. I apologize. If there are no questions, then all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Deming?
And our next Personnel meeting is scheduled for the 6th of May.
Thank you. And the Policy Committee as well, Mr. Deming.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. Again, we have a couple of motions. The first one is to go for the first reading, to approve the first reading of Policies Number 915 and 916.
Do we have a second to the motion for the first reading of two policies?
All right.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mr. Deming moved, and Mrs. Schmidt seconded this motion. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Deming?
And the second motion is to approve several draft policies for the second reading, that's Policies A through P.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? Moved by Mr. Deming, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the second reading approval of the Policies listed as A through P. Comments or questions for board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Deming?
And our next policy review is scheduled for May 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt, the Upper Bucks County Technical School.
Thank you, Dr. Yarnell. The Upper Bucks County Technical School met on March 19th, 2015. The minutes will be available on the Upper Bucks County website, just a few points from the meeting. Facilities meeting met before the JOC meeting that meeting, that evening. The bond issued refinancing for the tech school, we got the bids back. It's a 2.45 percent is what the low bid came in at, and it will be a total savings of Penridge's portion of those savings will be $51,911.93. The bond value is $2.933 million, and it's a 10-year bond. Just a quick construction recap, the project right now is 50% built with 55% of the time left to completion. The completion date is still set for December of 2015. There is $39,000, $39,53 against a $765,000 contingency right now, which is 5.1% to the There will be no hazardous material collection this year at the Upper Bucks Tech School. They normally have it, but due to the construction this year, they're not going to have it. It will continue next year after the completion of the construction. And one more note, the 2015-2016 calendar will have a new student orientation on 8/24 for new students to come to the school to familiarize themselves. This wasn't able to happen this past year, so hopefully that will help our students this year. The next meeting for the Upper Bucks County Tech School is scheduled for April 16th, 2015, at 7:30.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, and thank you, Mrs. Yarvin, for filling in for me on Thursday night. Next item is Act 48, also, Mrs. Schmidt, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson, I skipped you, I apologize, you're on for the technology.
Thank you. The Technology Committee met on March 6th, 2015. I had one motion, which I think will probably be in two parts. There's the motion itself, the motion to accept the action steps as presented by Dr. Radigan to explore Mr. Thompson's ideas regarding advancing the promotion of the 21st century learning skills in the Penridge School District. The, there are 11 action steps, which I, I think it might be easier if Dr. Radigan says it rather than me over the phone. I don't know how you want to organize that.
Mr. Thompson, I'll, I'll read these steps.
Okay.
Because I do have, I printed them out late this afternoon. The first is to assess what we already are doing with respect to this particular type of activity. The second would be to determine if those efforts to date have been successful, which is always something that we need to do. Third is to gather additional information on what other districts are doing in this regard, and then based on the results from those first three activities, to determine who should be on a task force, including applicable students, parents, and community members, form that task force... Form that task force would be item five, and share with the task force information, gather the date, that would be done by the administration, obviously. Solicited other ideas and suggestions from the task force, and then create a proposal, including costs and resources needed to do whatever's proposed, and that would go to Dr. Scheid. And then present this proposal, Dr. Scheid will be doing the presentation to Dr. Radigan for approval. Once that, all those first nine have been accomplished, they'd be presented to the curriculum or technology committee to accept or adjust. And then the board, obviously, would be requested to vote on the final proposal. So that's the action step, so to speak, as part of this motion. Do you have anything to add? Mr. Thompson?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't. My answers are second to the board.
Well, I will get a second. Do we have a second to the motion?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Mr. Deming seconds the motion. Comments or questions on the motion for board members? Mrs. Yarnell?
I have a question. And I had asked Dr. Radigan earlier if she found an answer. Do we have, does Penridge have a definition of 20th-century learning skills?
21st century.
21st century.
We've forgotten the definition of 20th century.
Maybe we have one where you want to look to. Thank you.
To answer, yes, Mrs. Yarnell, to answer your question, in general, if you look at what the research says on this, it's typically collaboration, digital literacy, critical thinking, and problem solving, but Penridge has them as the four Cs of communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking.
Now, where, where is the definition, where, is that in a, is that in a policy, or I'm just wondering where?
In a comprehensive.
Where in a comprehensive plan, yeah?
It's in shared values in our comprehensive plan.
Okay. Yeah, I had just asked that, just to clarify, because it can be a broad term, just to make sure that we're on the, you know, everybody's on the same page with what that means. Thank you.
And I have a comment that I would like to, on steps one and two, I would like to underscore that this is not, how do we assess that we're being successful? This is not easy to do. As I said, I've spoken with some other districts, and so far I've not gotten specific answers on that, and it will be a challenge for us to do some research and to come up with appropriate ways of evaluating our success in this endeavor.
Thank you. I agree with that. Any other comments or questions for board members on the motion that's on the board? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. You do not have...
The technology committee will be scheduled as needed, that was my answer.
Okay, all right, thank you. And now we'll go to Act 48, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. The Act 48 committee met on March 12th of 2015, started off with some discussion on the carousel sessions, which will be offered this summer 2015. Was a presentation given by Mr. Keith Verberka. There was discussion regarding the training for Act 126, which is mandated child reporting, and Act 71, suicide prevention. Act 126 is a three-hour training session, which needs to occur every five years. Both will be offered through Global Compliance Network Training, which is an online training vehicle for both. And the next meeting is scheduled for May 14th, 2015.
Thank you. Ad hoc fundraising. Mrs. Yarnell and/or Mrs. Schmidt?
Okay, the committee met on March 11th, and we discussed the status of the campaign. The, with advertising, there was nothing new, although there were some contracts that were pending. Sponsors were still at the, there's nothing new since our last meeting. The payers, there are 20 payers sold, nothing new in the green and white club. The flagpole memorial, Mr. John Snyder spoke on behalf of the VFW, and he talked about that, and we are looking now into design and getting quotes for what that would look like, so that discussion will continue. We had an update on the Build It For Bud campaign, and that is, 80% of the funds have been committed for that sponsorship. And we discussed the weight room equipment. There's an assistant coach who's working on the design and layout, which will, I'm sure, eventually come through one of the committees, and the weight room will have equipment pieces that will have sponsorship opportunities. We talked about booster clubs, nothing really new with that, although I know Mrs. Schmidt has talked to some booster clubs about participating in the campaign. We discussed the budget and just for the campaign, which was $500, and so far $88 has been spent to produce the initial flyers. We talked about reaching out to alumni via email, which wouldn't have any cost, and we did discuss also sending out letters to advertisers, to businesses as potential advertisers. And as if there's public comment, and that was the end of the meeting. And our next, we don't have another meeting scheduled, it will be scheduled as needed.
Thank you, Mrs. Yarnell. At this point, unfinished business? None? New business from board members? Mrs. Yarnell, sorry, Mrs. Miller?
That's right. I would just like to add that on Saturday, I attended the indoor color bar competition, it was quite, quite a lot of talent. Also, what impressed me was the drum line, the Penridge drum line. I understand that they're self-funded and coached by one volunteer, Dalton, one student volunteer, so it was quite impressive. Your performance was very impressive.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'm going to start the announcements by doing something I should have done at the beginning of the meeting. To my immediate left is Ms. Erin Kiernan. She is one of Mr. Cox's colleagues at East Burn and Gray, and she's representing us as our solicitor tonight at the meeting, so I want to welcome her and thank her. So far, she hasn't been forced to crack the whip over any of us, and, you know, I guess we haven't behaved that badly so far. So the next regularly scheduled board meeting is going to be on April 27th, 2015. It will be at 7:30. It will be here, in this room, LGI 3.3 at High School. I should also announce that there were, has been negotiations held on February 11th and 26th. There is another negotiation session scheduled for April 1, and then one later, or in the middle of April as well. And there were PEA negotiations held on February 4th, 10th, and March 18th, and they have several more, I believe, scheduled as well. There was an executive session held on March 16th, the purpose of negotiations, and there will be an executive session held tonight as well for the purpose of personnel. At this point, comments and questions from guests? Same rules as before? Mrs. Harrington?
Diane Harrington, Hilltown Township. This is in regards to the current agenda item of my right to new request. They first appear on the agenda on October 27th, and then not an agenda item again until I can find additional minutes until January 28th meeting. I make this observation because it is an October meeting that the public was told, and I quote, "These are costly and time-consuming." However, the costs skyrocketed from $3,962.50 to $16,446. Yet it did not appear in the agenda for two months. These costs, as I understand from the minutes, are for legal expenses incurred to manage right to new requests. Have any of you actually read any of the right to new requests? Looked at the information that was asked for? The reason I ask is I'm wondering if anyone's actually read the transcript from the hearing held. I know it's 133 pages, but it's more than three months since a certified copy was available. I would hope by now the board is aware that your own district staff stated under oath, and I quote, "They have not read the district policy on right to..."